It's time to wake up. 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 Woo! At the break of dawn and it's on again, baby, get ready to climb back on the lane. Come on, man, shake the dust off the floor. Don't yawn and prolong what you got to do. But if you've been on the thing, any negative things, boy, it's your opportunity for turning up. Today's a new chapter. Right, right? Take it in with the wind. Give it all you got. First, you gotta rise like a lurk. The dirt from your eyes and work. Hit it times, man. We've been trying to prove this. Let's go, man. It's time to wake up. 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 Take them all. Take, take, take. Let's go. Take, take, take them all. Take, take, take them all. You can't wait around for someone to through you. Now is the moment to begin your renewal. Man, feel alive with the vibe energized at the boats. You're coming by the white in your eyes. Hey, another day might waste away. Come on, let's get it going. Don't make the same. So bring me your arm and lift your arm high. Like Georgia, we'll get a piece of the pie. Begin it with the step. You'll get in it in a second. You're winning like you never did it when you overslept. So write this, man. Get ready, man. What time it is? Time to wake up.
Good morning, Birmingham. This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, May 6th, 2025. This morning, our invocation will be delivered by Pastor Tyrone Odom Sr. of the Redeeming Grace Tabernacle Church here in the city of Birmingham. And our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilor Hunter Williams, if he joins us. If you're willing and able, please stand.
To the Lord, we thank you for allowing us to see this day because a lot of people didn't get the chance to see this day. Thank you that we're here. We appreciate you. Now, God, we ask you to come into this place and take control of the entire situation. Bind confusion in the name of Jesus. Bind things that come to take away people's peace. Let peace abound. Let love rule in the name of Jesus. And God, even in this situation, we can't do it without you. Guide each and every person that is in charge of whatever they've been set to do. And Lord, let your will be done, not ours, in the name of Jesus. We give you praise and we give you glory and we give you honor because we believe that it is done. We believe it is well. We believe it is so. In Jesus' name, thank God. Amen.
Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Good morning, council. I'm sorry. Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Good morning. Councilmember Smitherman. Good morning. Councilmember Tate. Good morning. Councilmember Williams. Good morning. Councilmember Woods. Good morning. Council President Potem Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Good morning. And Council President O'Quinn.
Good morning, President. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council, the minutes are not ready for the February 4th, 2025 through April 29th, 2025 meetings. At this time, we'll have communications for Mayor Woodfin.
Mr. President, good morning. To the entire council, good morning to all of you. Good to see you. And to the public and those who are in the chamber this morning, good morning, as well as those online. I want to start with a special note, and it is a Happy Mother's Day early. And the Sunday is, of course, you know, is Mother's Day. So I would like to wish a Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers and grandmothers who are on our council as well as members of the city staff, as well as our residents. I want to wish you all a joyful weekend and love and appreciation, and most importantly, you deserve it. If you were unaware, today, May 6th, is the birthday of Say Hey Kid. So we would like the public to know that they can join the Negro Southern League Museum for a first-of-its-kind hip-hop workshop as they celebrate the birthday and history of the great Willie Mays. The event is tonight from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. at 120 16th Street. It is free for all ages. Again, the event is tonight from 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at 120 16th Street South, and it is free for all ages. This Friday, May 9th, the community is invited to celebrate the 62nd commemoration of the historic Children's March. Local foot soldiers and 2025 Strong Curve Honoree Paulette Robey is leading this effort. The event will start at 9:00 a.m. and will start at Killa Ingram Park. And for more information, you can reach out to Paulette Robey at info@cracfs.org. Again, for more information, you can reach out to Paulette Robey At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Valencia Johnson to come to the podium, also affectionately known as Ms. V. She's here to tell us about her upcoming play, which opens this Friday, May 9th. I'll let her tell you the name of the play and more about it.
Sisters of Secrets. Sisters of Secrets. Shh. Sisters of Secrets. Shh. Sisters of Secrets. Shh. Sisters of Secrets. Shh. You got Claudia on me, Nancy Choos, and Sammy Fay, and they are the sassy daughters of Georgia Mays. Sisters of Secrets.
Get it up for my messy aunties, the cast of Sisters of Secrets. Super grateful. Thank you, Mayor. To the board, I'm so excited. I know this is a serious chambers and y'all got business to do, but I wanted to bring you something that could just kind of lighten you up a little bit. I've given all of you an Epic Gold Pass. Hold them up. Let me make sure you got them. You can't scalp them. I'm so grateful because we have put a facility in, excuse me, the heart of the hood. It's a beautiful facility. Some of y'all seen it, right? I prepped them for that. But we are super excited that we're able to bring the arts and empowerment and all of those entertaining pieces that we hold. These three girls are my messy aunties and this cabaret Sisters of Secrets. None of y'all didn't just go on Eventbrite and buy tickets, so I'm giving them to you for free. I want you to come. Please join us. Thank you again, Mayor. I hope that you guys will come out and check out the Epic Center. We're going to do great things. We'll make you proud, Mayor. And on behalf of my husband, Big Ed, in the building and the entire Epic family, God bless y'all. Thank y'all.
I promise you, she didn't give me a heads up. But I liked it a lot. That was great. Thank you, Ms. V. This is Black Nurses Association Week. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Rogers, President of the Birmingham Black Nurses Association, as well as her guests, to join me at the podium. As they come, May 6th through May 12th, is Nurses Week. We want to pause and honor the selfless work nurses do every single day. I know because my younger sister's one. And at this time, we want to present a proclamation that I will read in part and then have Dr. Rogers come up to share on whatever it is she wants to share. And it states, whereas along with the American Nurses Association, the Birmingham Black Nurses Association, Inc. has declared May 6th through May 12th as Nurses Week with the theme "The Power of Nurses", with appreciation for nurses' unparalleled impact and their contributions to health care and an open invitation to thank a nurse for enriching our lives and the world we live in. Now therefore, I, Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the city of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council, do hereby proclaim May 6th through May 12th, 2025, as Black Nurses Association Week in the city of Birmingham and encourage all citizens to join me in celebrating registered nurses, not during just this week, but at every opportunity throughout the year. And at this time, Dr. Rogers will like to share a few remarks with the council.
Good morning. Thank you. On behalf of the Birmingham Black Nurses Association, we extend our deepest gratitude to Mayor Woodfin and the city of Birmingham for recognizing the invaluable contributions of registered nurses through this meaningful proclamation. Nurses are the backbone of our health care system, providing compassionate care, expertise, and unwavering dedication in every corner of our communities. As we celebrate Nurses Week with the theme "The Power of Nurses", we honor the resilience, skill, and impact of nursing professionals who continuously advocate for health equity and excellence. The National Black Nurses Association theme this year is rooted in purpose, growing, and power. So we're very much aligned with the A&amp;A theme. The Birmingham Black Nurses Association remains committed to fostering diversity in nursing, advancing health care access, and supporting the professional growth of nurses. We invite the residents of Birmingham to join us in celebrating all nurses, not only during Nurses Week, but throughout the year by recognizing their sacrifices, expressing gratitude, and uplifting their voices. So if you know a nurse, say thank you. And let me just say one thing. For an impressive 23 years as of 2024, nursing was rated as the most ethical and most honest profession and most trusted. So that Gallup poll has not gone out for 2025, but I bet you it's going to be the 24th year. Again, we say thank you.
Councilman Smitherman.
Just very quickly, you know, a lot of times we may say ourselves we have thankless jobs, but I think you all do as well. My older sister is a nurse, and she's been a nurse for about 17 years. And so I know that you guys don't get paid enough, obviously. Trust me, I know. You guys don't really get enough breaks either. You're on your feet for 12 hours and you take care of us. And I'm really thankful for nurses because of her education. When I got COVID, she was able to nurse me through without me going to the hospital. You guys are so intelligent, honestly. I'm always so impressed with nurses, but I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for what you do.
All right. Councilor Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to just celebrate y'all as well today. So appreciative of the work you do in general, but specifically for your partnership with District 1, y'all have really helped us out with CPR training in the schools and the community. I think we've been done a couple of food giveaways, so really appreciate that, as well as my good friend, Ms. Deborah. Appreciate you, so thank you for all that y'all did.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Of course, it's the month of May. And it's a time where we honor heritage and a lot of other things. We are excited to have Ms. Margaret Norman, who is Director of the Jewish Community Relations Council for the Birmingham Jewish Federation, to be here, as well as her guests, and I would ask that they join me at the podium now. And as they come forward, the Jewish people of Birmingham have been an integral part of the history, as well as the culture and economic development and diversity of our city since its founding in 1871. So at this time, we would like to honor them during this month with a special proclamation that I'll read in part. It states, whereas during Jewish American Heritage Month, we encourage the residents of Birmingham to commemorate and celebrate the essential contributions, sacrifices, and accomplishments that our Jewish brothers and sisters have made and continue to make for our city. Now therefore, I, Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the city of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Jewish American History Month in the city of Birmingham, as well as join all Americans in thanking our fellow Jewish Americans, as well as our Jewish American residents for shaping our country's character, strengthening our promise of religious freedom, and teaching us the virtues of justice, hope, as well as perseverance. And at this time, I would like to ask Ms. Norman to say and share a few words.
Thank you so much, Mayor Woodfin, and thank you to the city council for having us here today. My name is Margaret Norman, and I'm Director of the Jewish Community Relations Council, a committee of the Birmingham Jewish Federation tasked with building bridges between our Jewish community and wider community. And Jewish American Heritage Month, or JAM, as it's known shorter, was established in 2006 to recognize the contributions that Mayor Woodfin was referencing and really serves as an important vehicle for sharing our history nationally and locally. And there's so much rich Jewish history in this city. I'm going to share just a few words about that today. I myself am a transplant to Birmingham. I've been here almost a decade. And in that decade, I've learned so much about the individuals that have shaped this community, such as Samuel Ullman, who served on Birmingham's first Board of Education, or families like the Posits and Hes families and other Jewish merchants whose businesses once populated the streets of downtown. Through our work, learning more about our community and the civil rights movement, I've learned about courageous men and women who took a stand during those pivotal years. Men like progressive lawyers Abe Berkowitz, Jerome Buddy Cooper, and Carl Friedman. I know some of those are familiar names. And women like Gertrude Goldstein and Annie Kraus, who are among 72 Alabamians to march in Selma in 1965, the day before Bloody Sunday. Our local congregations, of course, Temple Emmanuel, Temple Bethel, Knesset Israel and Hibod of Alabama, and our Jewish nonprofits and agencies have been important parts of Birmingham's civic, communal, and interfaith landscapes. And the history of being Jewish in Birmingham has not always been an easy one. It has had opportunities and challenges. But since the first Jewish family arrived here in the very year of Birmingham's founding, the Jewish community has always strived to be a part of making Birmingham the best place it can be. So with that, I want to say that this month is not only about remembering our past, but also reflecting on our present and future as members of this Birmingham community. And through this occasion, we want to remember and reaffirm our values of understanding and acceptance, of building bridges and resilience, and celebrate our Jewish community and its continued role in this great city. So thank you so much for having us and to my colleagues for being here today as well. And thank you, Mayor Woodfin and the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norman. If you're unaware, May is also Historic Preservation Month. And so at this time, I would like to ask Ms. Hannah Garman of the Historic Preservation Manager in the Department of Planning, Engineering, and Impairments, as well as members of the PEP team, to join me as we share a few notes. One is the city of Birmingham, as you know, council, is very committed to bringing awareness and education to the value and benefits of historic preservation and to highlighting the many facets of the historic preservation program, which I know many of you all are very keen and sensitive to. And so at this time, we would like to honor the work with the proclamation that I'll read in part. And this is the short version, everyone. Whereas during this month, the city of Birmingham will celebrate the efforts of those who work so hard to preserve our city's heritage and recognize the importance of historic preservation. Now therefore, I, Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the city of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Historic Preservation Month in the city of Birmingham and call upon the people of Birmingham to engage in events hosted by the public about historic preservation. And at this time, Ms. Garman can fill you in with a few things.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor and city council. Again, my name is Hannah Garman. I serve as the Historic Preservation Manager for the city of Birmingham. It's nice to be here with you this morning. We have a slate of events for Historic Preservation Month in May. This is our third year to do it, and we've added and changed events each year. But briefly, I just wanted to give you kind of a rundown of our schedule. I have additional flyers and brochures for you. But today, we have our first historic lecture, and it is about best practices for preservation materials and methods. And Chloe Mercer from the Alabama Historical Commission, the state Historic Preservation Office, will be presenting that. On Saturday, we have our first weekend event, which is a historic walking tour of the College Bill section of the Birmingham Civil Rights Heritage Trail. We'll start at Bethel Baptist Church, go around the block, and back up at Historic Bethel. The next week, we have our Community Preservation Spotlight. It is another workshop held at Slough Furnace, and it's going to feature Ms. Paula Stanton from the Tittysville Historic Marker Committee, as well as a community member from Bush Hills talking about their preservation efforts. We also have, our next lecture is going to be held on May 20th, again at Slough Furnace at noon. And it is called "Building Birmingham: The Architecture of the Modern Movement." Excuse me. That will be presented by Ms. Caroline Swope, a PhD in Historic Preservation. Our final lecture is Thursday, May 29th, and it's about historic preservation and easements. And Mr. David Fleming, the Director of Red Birmingham, will be presenting that information. We also have two more historic walking tours. On May 21st, we have the Historic Walking Tour of the Civil Rights National Monument in Fourth Avenue Historic District. On Thursday, May 22nd, we also have a walking tour of Slough Furnace. Each year, we try to feature a city historic site in one of our tours. We also have one final training event, and that is going to be Tuesday, May 27th at noon. It is at the Birmingham Association of Realtors, and it's about selling real estate in our historic districts. We really appreciate y'all having us this morning. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. But we would love for you to come out and join us. Like I said, all of these events are free and open to the public. They are all at noon, besides this Saturday's walking tour, which is at 10:00 a.m. We wanted to get you before it got too hot. So y'all feel free to come out and join us.
Thank you. Councilor Clark.
Thank you. I just want to thank you all for doing this. I think last year was really great, and I hope I can participate in some of the events this year. Wanted to just note that, like, the historic marker at Tuxedo Junction was damaged by a car. And I think the state highway signs were also damaged, but they've been replaced. I don't know what our process is for getting those replaced, but...
We are working on that, and the Graymont School as well.
Oh, good.
So we are in the process of working on getting those markers recast. It does take about a year to get them because the waitlist is so long, so that's something we're working through.
I see. Okay. And please let our office know if we can help with the cost of those.
Okay, we will. Thank you so much. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Councilor Abbott.
Yeah, before Ms. Garman gets away and her colleagues, I just want to say that, you know, I serve on the historical commission, and I have spent my whole life interested in preservation. One of the things that makes our city so wonderful is the fact that we still have a lot of historic buildings. We haven't bulldozed everything we have, kind of like Atlanta did. So I think it's important for us to preserve what we have because that's who we are. That's our character. And yes, you can tear down a historic structure and build a new building, and it will be nice, but it won't be anything like what you demolished and sent to the landfill. So I admire you for what you do, and I hope that everyone takes advantage of this and learns more because our neighborhood associations, every single one of them should have a historic district in their neighborhood. But most people don't know that there are protections available by having a local historic district. So I think we don't have enough emphasis, but it looks like we're getting back on track to get more emphasis on historic preservation. So thank you.
Mr. President and council, thank you for your patience. Just two more updates. Certainly, last but not least, it's Small Business Week. This time, I would like to ask Cornel Westley and his entire team of IEO to join me at the podium. As you know, Mr. Westley is the Director of Innovation and Economic Opportunity. It's a very amazing team who they all collaborate with to support small businesses every single day. They take the time this week to pause, uplift, amplify, and be a super cheerleader to small businesses in the city of Birmingham. As you know, the city of Birmingham recognizes the significant contributions of small businesses to job creation, innovation, and community development. And so we would just like to pause to honor our small businesses and the work of IEO to support them with the proclamation that I'll read in part. It states, whereas from May 4th to May 10th of 2025, the city of Birmingham will celebrate Small Business Week under the theme "Small Business: Big Opportunity", highlighting the entrepreneurial spirit and resilience of small business owners. And whereas the city of Birmingham is proud to welcome and celebrate businesses that enrich our community through collaborative impact, as well as their models for success and sustainability. Now therefore, I, Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the city of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council, do hereby proclaim May 4th to May 10th, 2025, as Small Business Week in the city of Birmingham. And I urge all residents to support, patronize local small businesses and entrepreneurs, recognizing their invaluable contributions to our community and economy. I'd like to bring Cornel Westley up, who will introduce his other team member.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Cornel Westley. Proudly serve as the Director for the Department of Innovation and Economic Opportunity. So I'm joined here by a dynamic team who I prefer you hear from because they're doing the work every day on the ground. So if Ms. Monique Short, if you come, and she serves as our Program Director for the Office of Business Diversity and Opportunity, who have been spearheading all of the activities of Small Business Week.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing us to be here today. And I'm super excited about Small Business Week. We kicked off Sunday Fun Day in the Fourth Eldon Business District, and we had an amazing time. The community came out. And then on Monday, yesterday, we had Nonprofit Day, which is important to all the nonprofits in the city because they are also the backbone of our city. And then we did a virtual stream yard about workforce development strategies. And we had a grand opening yesterday of Archibald Woodrow. So I saw a lot of you there yesterday, and we're not done yet. So today, we have terrific theater at 2:00 about marketing, and then we're going to have an influential lounge tonight at Avenue D. And then we're going to keep going. So we have tomorrow, we have Friday, we have Black Men by Houses Summit. This week is all about celebrating our small businesses, and we have a few of them here with us today. There's a week-long activities. We've grown from just three virtual events to about 15 over a seven-day span. And we have had fun. And again, come out. If you can hear my voice, everybody can hear my voice. Come and join us. Register today at bhmu p.com. And if it says sold out, just tell them I'm sent you. We look forward to seeing everybody there. But I do want to say mess plus, wave your hands, hello. And then we also have Seaworth House Consulting. And then we have Be Grace Media. And then, I can't be remiss, I have Dot G T R, our Small Relationship Coordinator, and of course, our Senior Deputy Director, Coriaste Housing. That's it. So I hope to see you all this week. Again, we have something every single day. Check us out in the Birmingham Times as well. A lot of our small businesses are covered there as well. So we look forward to seeing you, and thank you for your time.
I can't let you guys get away without thanking you again for the ribbon cutting yesterday for Woodrows and Archibald and Woodrows. That is, you know, a really huge win for the city of Birmingham. Mr. Woodrow Washington, you know, has been in Northport for, you know, that business is 60 years old. And, you know, he was looking for the right opportunity to... And um, you know, he was looking for the right opportunity to uh expand his business and uh you you guys made it possible. I also want to thank my colleagues for supporting um the incentives that we approved to to help him make that possible. Um, you know, it was, we were all a little sad when uh Ribbit Up decided to close up shop. Um, so, you know, generations of people had been going to that corner for uh barbecue for, you know, a long time and enjoying it. And um to have Mr. Washington come in and and reestablish that um and have the, you know, Taylor family embrace him, uh it's just a huge deal. So thank you, thank you, thank you again for everything you all did to make that possible. Appreciate it. Councilor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just want to say thank you to Cornell and his team, Dot and Monique and Chastity, Be Grace Media. Med Plus, please tap into Med Plus. They have a pharmacy tech program that you can take advantage of, a good job. So please, so thank you all. Um, I saw the schedule. Y'all got some dynamic stuff, Coriante. Y'all have some dynamic things happening throughout Birmingham this week. And so I would just really challenge everybody to go out. If you miss Nonprofit Week, I'm sure you can follow up with Cornell and his team so you can learn how to properly operate a nonprofit without getting into federal nine ninety nine, nine ninety trouble. But Cornell, again, good job. I mean, I saw the schedule and as Councilor Quinn stated, I missed the Archibald opening, but I definitely will be supporting um them because I'm familiar with that barbecue joint, you know, going to Tuscaloosa. So you guys have done an amazing job and thank you all for all that you all are doing for this city. Thank you.
Mr. President and Council, one last note. Without fail, my number one priority is public safety. Um, it's public safety in our city. And as pleased as we are with the recruiting efforts of BPD, uh with the graduation classes passed Friday, with the current recruitment class of fifty that started April seventh, a month ago, there are other things uh we have to do, we have to continue to do as it relates to keeping our citizens safe. As you know, there was a crime commission report that included eighty-two recommendations back in January. And it has been forty-five days since the last update. Uh, I apologize, I'm about fifteen days late. I told you I would provide an update to you every thirty days or so. I want to keep that commitment and I want to keep the transparency in where we are with those recommendations. Uh, with that said, as as of course, uh we've identified a total of fifty-four of the eighty-two recommendations are in play, some form of action. Um, with thirty-two of those are active and in progress and twenty-two are in development. Um, I do want to pause and particularly um speak of my sincere gratitude and a thank you to our various departments who've been working together to tackle hotspots in the community beyond policing, as you know. It was one of the recommendations to address hotspots in our community. Um, and so this includes code enforcement, cleaning up overgrown lots and demolishing abandoned buildings. Um, if you are unaware, since this report was released to us, we've been able to remove a hundred and twenty-six blighted structures in our community literally between January and the um, say, April twenty-sixth or something of that nature. If you do the map, um that's one blighted structure removed a day at minimum. Um, and we've had a particular interest in quickly removing these burned down structures as well. Our third-party violence reduction teams have completed hiring, that's an update, and much of the training as well to implement pilot projects. This also includes the expansion of the hospital-linked violence intervention intervention from acute care to the emergency room, which I know you all support. Um, the good news is that the legal agreements are now finalized and work will begin this month. In addition to that, much of the work in implementing the recommendations have dealt with coordination and better collaboration. Uh, this includes the Birmingham Police Department's effort to enhance partnerships with agencies like the State Pardon and Paroles, as well as it also includes bi-weekly meetings of the Magic City Peace Collective, which is a Birmingham-based initiative dedicated to reducing violence and fostering public safety through collaboration and community-driven strategies. A few more notes, a great deal of work now focuses on implementing new systems, funding and cultivating wider partnerships. In addition to that, uh there's active work on the recommendations around assessing how many officers we need, um as well as where beats precincts, et cetera, should be as it relates to just policing um a city that's our square miles and our city's population. We're also still in the early stages of considering the recommendation of a public safety czar, public safety commissioner or a public safety coordinator. A lot of synonyms there. But we're reviewing best practices in other cities and determining what a director or coordinator would look like here. Um, I'm pleased with the progress of that and I think we'll have more to share really soon on what happens next with that recommendation. And we'll update you as we go move through that process. Um, as always, a status report is available online, not just to you, but to our entire general public at birminghamal.gov slash CSI. Again, that's birminghamal.gov slash CS CSI. And Mr. President and Council, with that, thank you for your patience this morning. That concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Councilor Moore.
Yes, Mr. President. I did have one question. Um, I I know that we have the Hospital Violence Linked Intervention Program in place. Um, are we seeing a reduction in the amount of uh individuals that are uh having to be involved in that program?
So I think what we have seen, um, because um I don't have the stats in front of me. We know those who've gone through the acute process, we've definitely seen a decrease. We have seen an increase in the emergency room, so we're not there yet. We believe once it's implemented, we will see a ink in a decrease. Um, that is the goal here when you, because it's bookend, right? One of the bookends is having this in the emergency room, this program emergency room, to decrease being patched up and going out there immediately retaliating. But also with the street teams that are deployed on the ground, the whole idea is to prevent that from happening in the first place. So those, having those bookends are very important to decreasing um people entering um our emergency rooms or re-entering our emergency rooms. Um, the other thing to note is, not as of May fifth, but as of May fourth, homicides are down in our city forty-three percent. Um, so we're still maintaining above forty percent um related to homicide decrease. Uh, but we have seen in that same time period felony assaults. And so there's a, there's a very high focus on the discharging and shooting into occupied dwellings and occupied vehicles. Um, we are pleased um with um the state bill um that increased the penalties for shooting into occupied dwelling or vehicle, um as well as adding that to Anaya's law um for judges to consider um the circumstances of that shooting, uh what bond or bail should be and if there should be a bond or bail. Um, I think it's very reckless to just drive around shooting into homes and vehicles, uh whether they're occupied or not occupied. Uh, the enhancement is different for both and we're glad to see that enhancement. But BPD has also been making arrests and they're not gonna let up. They're gonna keep applying a pressure for those who are shooting into occupied dwellings and occupied vehicles.
Yes, sir. Um, I'll say this. I know that forty-three percent may not, you know, be the best number, but I think that it's a trend in the right direction. Um, and I'm excited about that. I know that, you know, I've gone to several Neighborhood Association meetings where, you know, um residents can feel the difference. They can notice the difference. Um, and so that means that, you know, everything that we're putting in in place is working. Um, I know I saw one hood, you know, that was uh out there at um MLK. Um, and I I recently got a call that, you know, they're gonna be coming to District Four as well. So uh I'm excited about all the great things that are being done to address this public safety issue.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Smith.
Um, in that regards, I do want to thank the work of our Public Safety Chairwoman, uh Councilor Tate. She's been doing an amazing job. She has been fighting for um community violence intervention programs since day one. And you told us it would take us about a year and a half, two years, and we're finally seeing it. So thank you so much. Um, I think having you and Hunter on the Public Safety Committee together, bringing different perspectives, has really um improved. And thank you, Mayor Woodman, for um taking a progressive step forward on that because a lot of mayors wouldn't believe in going that progressive towards public safety and the fruits of everyone's labor is coming to fruition. So thank you and um thank you to Chief Pickett. I know he's not here, but I think that was a great pick. I think I've definitely seen the difference with him being in the community. It matters knowing who your police chief is and seeing him out. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all for your patience.
Council Williams.
Yeah, thank you, uh Mayor, for that update and y'all's um willingness and due diligence to stick through um, you know, that that initiative as a whole. I I I think that that's a great thing. I think that um someone just took Crystal's point, just called us the stick and the carrot on the Public Safety Committee. But anyway, um, hey, I I I wanted to, maybe this is an offline conversation, but I really wanted to have a conversation about how BPD is interacting with our unhoused population, specifically um open-air drug market, you know, activity uh across from the VA on Highway seventy-eight. I mean, you see open-air heroin use. We have uh at the at the exit of St. Vincent's and now on Diaper Row, when you exit, um, there's about, there's always about four people under the bridge buying narcotics. And I know that the State Supreme Court and there has been litigation about enforcement of homelessness. But um, you know, as we've gotten a lot of complaints about it, even though one of the, two of those areas are not in my district, but I'm getting complaints about it. And I do drive by and watch the drug use every day on Diaper Row. And so um, it's, you know.
So one, thank you for bringing that to our attention. We've been, a couple of things. So I want to answer your question and then, yes, let's talk more offline because once you.
You've just been sent up a lot.
Additional spaces, like we want to direct resources there. So a couple of things have been happening. Um, there, there has been considerable conversations internally between the Police Department, Legal Department, and my staff about, um along with calls from the Legal Department to Senator Smith, who I think introduced the bill a couple of years ago about um what the state and what local authorities can do as it relates to vagrancy as well as um some of the activity you described. So trying to interpret um the law and then application of what, how BPD can interact or what they cannot do. Um, pleased with the progress. Julie Bernard has led this conversation from the Legal Department. Um, and the mayor's office is kind of taking a step out from the standpoint of legal is is now giving direction to BPD of how to engage this situation. Um, one of the biggest areas we've seen now, the application of this as it relates to the open um drug sales, um it's Fourteenth and Second Avenue North. I personally went down there myself last week. I talked to um the chairperson of the reconciler. Um, and there's a lot of activity. Uh, when I saw my own eyes, similar to what you've seen when you've driven, drove by. So I, you know, between North Precinct and Narcotics, uh what are we doing on the first of the month? Uh, what are we doing certain hours of the, of the day, certain days of the week related to that activity and focusing on the drug dealers? Um, and then that's citywide beyond homelessness. We are going after those um who are selling drugs, particularly causing overdoses with fentanyl. Um, and so that's a add-on, but there is definitely a focus on the open-air um drug transactions in the Second and Fourteenth in our public parks such as Brother Brian. And now you've given me these addresses, so I just need them again, that you give them directly to me. And that we will make sure uh we can get some staying operations in those areas as well.
Thank you. I work out at the at the Y over there and it's making my workout very challenging because when I walk in, everyone attacks me, "What you doing about it?" So, anyway, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Sure, Councilor.
Um, in regards to our unhoused residents, um over in the Five Point South, Twenty Midtown, of their Cap'n D's, it's it's been an increase in activity. I was in Captain D's line getting food for my family and literally there was someone tapping on our cars multiple times, trying to get our attention.
What'd you say? I heard Captain D's.
Um, over there in Five Point South.
Five Point South.
Yeah, near Children's Hospital.
Oh, Sixth Avenue South, yes. Fifth and Sixth Avenue South.
Well, it's still Five Point South, but um, you know, I see the same person there downtown. So it's, it's been a lot more increase of that. I'm not saying to jail them or anything, but there needs to be some type of concentration around the homeless. But in the positive about CAP, the CAP program, they did come by our law office and ask us about any issues we had, any situations. And they did have their eye on helping the unhoused. So I do want to say in the positive.
This, this conversation always is balanced. I want to be very clear. As it relates to the open drug sales, that's full enforcement. Um, but then I think there are other issues that require a different approach. We are pleased with CAP expansion and we're definitely pleased uh with Urban Alchemy being on the ground, working with Elena Melton. And what we continue to share with business owners, look, if the activity is not illegal, definitely call us and so we can dispatch one heart, Urban Alchemy, to the location. And they have a way of um engaging that kind of diffuses things. However, if it escalates and the behavior um is criminal in nature, definitely call nine-one-one. Still call us as well so we can engage differently.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just to add on, you know, I want to say thank you to you and everyone else, um, you know, across law enforcement who, you know, are making a noticeable difference. You know, really happy to see uh Jefferson County Sheriff's Department and P BPD, you know, uh the BPD operation last week that netted, you know, um a whole bunch of arrests and, you know, guns and drugs, um, you know, kudos. Um, I did want to follow up on our previous inquiry. You know, it was a few months ago that you and US Attorney Prim Escalona talked to us about, you know, our homicide caseload and the adjudication of those um cases. So just want to continue to, you know, lift up that issue. Um, I, you know, again, I did reach out to Speaker Ledbetter via email. Um, he did not respond. I was able to speak to him in person. You know, his off-the-cuff response was that Jefferson County has more judges than anybody, you know, else in Alabama. Um, but, you know, we still have this three-to-four-year delay in going to trial for murder cases. So um just want to keep pressing on that issue.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. All right, at this time, I'll read our statement on the conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the Agenda Order of Business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Madam Clerk, could we please read through the items on our consent agenda?
Yes, sir. The consent agenda begins on page two with items three, four, and five. Page three, we have items six and seven. Go over to page ten. We have items ten, eleven, and twelve. On page eleven, we have items thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Page twelve, we have items seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. On page thirteen, we have items twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. On page fourteen, we have items twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty and thirty-one. On page fifteen, we have items thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six and thirty-seven. Please note on item thirty-two, it should be Sheridan Road, AKA six fifty-three Rad Highway. And on item thirty-five, it should be Birmingham instead of Belsimer. Page sixteen, we have items thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one and forty-two. On item thirty-nine, that zip code is three-five-two-one-seven. That's three-five-two-one-seven. On page seventeen, we have items forty-three, forty-four and forty-five. On page eighteen, we have items forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight and forty-nine. On page nineteen, we have items fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three and fifty-four. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any members of the council that wish to remove or add an item to the consent agenda? Council Williams.
Thank you, President O'Quinn. I'd like to remove on page eighteen, item number forty-seven.
Any other items? Okay. Excuse me. Items three through five, excuse me, are public hearing items marked for consent. Do any members of the public wish to add or wish to remove items three through five from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we're ready for a motion on the consent agenda?
I'm of approval. Okay.
All right. Let's take care of the consent agenda real quick. We just need a vote.
All right, hold on one second. Let me get the last person. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. We want to take items out of order. Please call up item fifty-five.
You said item five?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five, I'm sorry. On the addendum. Item fifty-five is a resolution to set a public hearing to consider extending the moratorium on automated car washes within the city to be held at the regular meeting of the council, to be held in the council chambers in the City Hall in Birmingham, Alabama on the twentieth day of May, twenty twenty-five at nine-thirty a.m. And to publish notice of the hearing not less than fourteen days before the date of such hearing. And a motion, please. I'm of approval. Second.
All right, any discussion? We're ready for the vote.
Hold on one second. This computer does not want to act right. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, item fifty-five passes. Item fifty-six, please.
Item fifty-six is a resolution of the Birmingham City Council. I'm sorry, authorizing the mayor to pursue all options to retain its rightful oversight of Birmingham Waterworks and to protect our citizens who it serves. And to this end, the council hereby authorizes the mayor and the city county, and the city attorney to take any and all necessary action, including initiation of appropriate court actions to oppose the implementation of SB three-three-zero and avoid the irreparable and devastating effects it poses for the Birmingham Waterworks and the citizens of Birmingham. And the council further approves, ratifies and confirms any actions taken by the mayor and city attorney to pursue such actions prior to the adoption of this resolution. Is approval?
All right, any discussion? We're ready for the vote.
I'm sorry, who made this second? Thank you, Council Williams. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Item fifty-six is approved. I'd like to call up items fifty-seven and fifty-eight together, please.
Okay, item fifty-seven and item fifty-eight. Item fifty-seven is a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase and sale agreement between the Birmingham Waterworks Board and the City of Birmingham under which the city will purchase the waterwork system from BWB for the sum of one dollar plus the defeasance and/or payment in full of the principal of and the interest on any bonds of the BWB plus the city's assumption of outstanding BWB contracts. That's item fifty-seven. Item fifty-eight is a resolution authorizing the mayor to investigate and prosecute any and all potential claims that the city may have in civil litigation in connection with SB three-thirty and to execute professional services agreement with Attorney Calvin Griesby as outside counsel for a fee in amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand dollars.
Move the items. All right.
Mr. President.
Attorney.
We're, we're going to discuss this.
Yes, Attorney King.
Yes, it is my recommendation, under Alabama State Code, Section thirty-six twenty-five A seven-eight-three, to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Councilmember Addit.
Aye.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Clark, I apologize. Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods. Council President Protiana Alexander.
Aye.
And Council President O'Quinn.
All right. So, we'll now go into executive session. We'll reconvene in thirty minutes or at the call of the chair, whichever comes first. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't quite know how that happened.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Ms. Madam Clerk, can you read the call to roll, please?
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Smithman. Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Woods. Council President Protheum Alexander.
Present.
And Council President Okwonya.
Present. Okay, um, we have for us items fifty-seven and fifty-eight. Those have been moved and seconded. Is there any additional discussion? Um, I believe we're ready for the vote.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, items fifty-eight, fifty-seven, fifty-eight are approved. All right, so now we'll go back to our regular agenda. Please, uh, read item number one, please.
Item number one on page, I'm sorry, item number one on page two. An ordinance to adopt the proposed amendments to the city zoning ordinance to amend the conditions for an automated car wash and the addition of a temporary parking lot as a special exception use. That's case number ZAC twenty-two-five dash zero-zero-zero-zero-one, and this is the hearing of all interested parties. Motion, please.
Right. Um, so moved.
Second.
All right, the chair of our planning and zoning committee, um, had to leave, so, I'll conduct this, uh, public hearing. Um, zoning staff, please.
Good morning. My name is Kim Spurrell. I serve as a city zoning administrator. Item number one has two key text changes to the city zoning ordinance. The first is adding a condition to our existing conditions for automated car washes. And the condition that we are adding is that no automated car wash shall be permitted when adjacent to any residentially zoned property. Um, so we think that this will help, um, with some of our locations that we've seen that have been adjacent to residential districts when we've had, um, lots of concerns from the neighborhood. The second part of this text amendment has to do with adding a new special exception use. That use is to provide temporary parking lots as a special exception in ours, in zoning districts R four, D four, R five, D five, R six, and then our mixed-use districts. And, um, the reason that we would like to add this is because we've seen a lot of our larger venues have trouble with finding parking for their clientele. And so we also proposed nine conditions that they will have to meet as part of the special exception. And I'll go through those real quick. I think it's important that you guys hear what those conditions are. The first one is that the temporary parking lot must be within one thousand three hundred twenty feet of the lot or parcel containing the primary use that will be utilizing the temporary parking lot. And it is only allowed if it's accessory to the following primary uses. An amphitheater with nine thousand seats or more, an arena or stadium with twenty-five thousand seats or more. Number two is submission of a parking layout plan identifying ingress and egress in any proposed landscaping for the temporary parking lot. Number three, lighting must be provided subject to our lighting standards in the city zoning ordinance. Number four, it may only be used for the parking of operable passenger motor vehicles during the time of scheduled events at the amphitheater, arena, or stadium with no overnight parking or camping allowed. Number five, the surfaces must be approved by the city engineer. So if the applicant were to propose a pervious surface, that would be permitted subject to review by the city engineer. Number six, the temporary parking lot must be secured in a manner that will not permit ingress and egress except during designated hours of operation. Number seven, the surface area of the parking lot shall be maintained in such a manner that no dust, sediment, or other debris caused by erosion, tracking, or other means be allowed to enter the city's stormwater system or exit the site. Number eight, approval of the temporary parking lot shall not exceed a period greater than one year. So this means if you need to extend your temporary parking lot special exception, you would have to reapply to the zoning board of adjustment after one year. And then number nine, the property must be returned to its intended use at the end of the designated one-year period unless you are granted another special exception. Um, that these text changes were reviewed by the zoning advisory committee on February fourth of this year, and they voted unanimously to approve the text changes. The planning and zoning committee met on February twenty-sixth and on March twenty-sixth of this year, and they voted to recommend approval of these text amendments to the full city council.
All right, any questions from the council? All right, are there any members of the public that wish to speak for or against?
Good morning. I'm Brian Wolfe with C.R. Endeavors. We are redeveloping the old Caraway Hospital, uh, next door to the amphitheater. I want to congratulate the city and particularly Kim and her team on allowing us to work collaborated with them on these, um, text amendments to the ordinance. They're very important, as you know. The neighborhoods have some serious concerns about parking, um, both at protective study events as well as amphitheater events. So they've done a really good job of outlining some very clear non-points that need to be taken care of to make sure that we've got really well thought out temporary parking, uh, and truly temporary in the sense that there's a timeline on it as well. So we're very supportive of those, and we look forward to complying with those for this upcoming season. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any additional discussion? I believe we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Item one is approved. Item two, please.
Okay. Item two is also on page two. It's an ordinance to adopt the proposed text amendment to the city zoning ordinance, ordinance number fifteen dash one thirty-three. This is case number ZAC twenty-two-five dash zero-zero-zero-zero-three, and it's also the hearing of all interested parties.
Staff?
Thank you. Um, my name is Kim Spurrell. I serve.
So, so I'm a second. Thank you.
Um, Kim Spurrell, I serve as a city zoning administrator. Um, we also have Jess Mays with us. She is the project manager for this text change amendment. We're very excited about this amendment. This text change would introduce three new zoning districts to the city of Birmingham, and they are all related to our open space. Um, so the three that we are proposing to add is our open space neighborhood and Greenway District. And this district would be intended for our local parks that are located throughout the city of Birmingham that our residents like to go to for recreation activities. The second new district is our open space regional park. And this district would include our large regional parks that attract visitors not only from inside the city, but from the, the rest of the state and from all over the country. And this would include the Birmingham Zoo, Red Mountain Park, um, Roughness, some of those larger regional parks that we have. And then the final district that we would like to propose is the open space natural areas district. And this district would protect and preserve our natural areas that could include our wetlands, the Cahaba River, Lake Purdy Basin, Freshwater Land Trust properties, and our FEMA Army Corps of Engineer buyout areas that are located in the city's floodplain districts. So what we've done is proposed adding these districts to the zoning ordinance. If the council approves the addition of the districts, then our planning team will pull out the maps, and we will work with our stakeholders on identifying the areas where we would like to implement these districts. And then we will ultimately come back before the council with a rezoning plan for the areas that we will identify to utilize these districts. Our team did have, um, a, a robust stakeholder and community engagement, um, meetings with some of our local stakeholders. We had eight stakeholder engagement meetings to get feedback from our residents in the month of December of twenty-twenty-four. And then in January of this year, we held three community engagement meetings to solicit feedback from the community on these districts. In March of this month, the planning and zoning committee reviewed our proposal, and they did recommend it to the full council as well as our zoning advisory committee. And if you have any specific questions about the districts, I'd be happy to answer them, or Jess would as well.
Any questions?
And just so I'm clear, this, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. President, just so I'm clear, this just adds another layer of protection for those green space or open space areas, um, should anything change, you know, uh, with that, that land, right?
Absolutely. So the, almost all of our current city parks, over a hundred city parks, are zoned single-family residential. So we feel it's very important to create a zoning classification that will protect our parks as well as protect our floodplain buyout areas and our wetlands and some of our other conservation properties. So once we come back to identify those properties with the, the zoning map, that will just add another layer of protection for these properties that, that we have all over the city.
So nobody would be able to come in and turn this into single-family, uh?
That's correct.
Okay, got you.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Thank you.
That's been an item of contention with some of our residents, um, you know, over the years, especially as, uh, various rumors have circulated about Legion Field, um, and McLendon Park. That's something that, you know, I know I've, I've dealt with. So this, you know, really helps clarify that and prevent the confusion that the current zoning, um, can potentially create.
Absolutely.
All right? Okay, thank you. Uh, this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak for or against? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, item two is approved. Um, I believe our next item.
The next item should be item number eight.
Eight.
Which is on page nine.
Okay.
A resolution approving payment to Adorama Inc., New York City, New York, in the amount of, and this is a change from the last meeting, the amount now is eleven thousand five hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. That was a change that was made. And that's for the purchase of five Low Pro Tahoe backpack, black, two Sony Alpha A seven-three digital camera body kits, two Slinger Alpine one sixty shoulder bags, two SanDisk Extreme Pro sixty-five gigabyte SD XCUHS one, two Sigma twenty-four dash seventy millimeter F two-point-eight, DG DN two art lens, two Think Tank emergency rain cover for grip for standard camera bodies, medium, five Slinger card caddy memory card case for SD and micro SD cards, black, two Manfrotta one-nine-zero-X, three-section aluminum video tripod with five-hundred fluid video head, two Manfrotto five-hundred PLONG video camera plate, two Flashpoint Zoom Mini TTL R two flash with integrated R two radio transceiver for Sony cameras, three BOSS Quiet Comfort Ultra Wireless Noise Counseling Over Ear Headphones, and two Apple iPad Pro eleven-inch with M four chip, mid-two-zero-twenty-four Space Black, two fifty-six gigabytes standard glass Wi-Fi at the unit prices on file in the office of the Assistant Purchasing Agent for the city council in accordance with section three dash one dash seven of the Birmingham City Code. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
Second. All right, that's been motioned and properly seconded as they're in discussion on this item. All right, we're, now we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Item eight is approved. Uh, item nine, please.
Okay. Item nine has been requested to be withdrawn.
Right. Item nine is withdrawn. That brings us to... Item forty-seven on page eighteen.
Okay. Sorry, let me go down to that. Item forty-seven. On page eighteen. Is a resolution approving payment to Atlanta Drone Group Inc., Madison, Alabama, for the purchase of sixteen DJI Dock Three, sixteen DJI M four TD aircraft, sixteen additional batteries and charging, sixteen drone since response dock license, eight thousand seven hundred sixty remote pilot in command one per hour, eight thousand seven hundred sixty remote pilot in command two per hour, one ADS-B hardware, one implementation in the amount of one million five hundred six thousand two-three hundred dollars at unit prices on file in the office of the Assistant Purchasing Agent for the Birmingham Police Department in accordance with section three dash one dash seven of the Birmingham City Code.
Move the item.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
The administration is requesting a one-week delay on this item.
All right, motion for a one-week delay.
So move.
Second.
All right, any discussion? We're ready for the vote.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Item forty-seven is delayed for one week. I believe that takes care of all of our business items. So we're now to, uh, district announcements. Councilmore, are you ready?
Uh, yes, I will go first. Okay, so. Uh, these are the announcements for District Eight Neighborhood Meetings. The Fairview Neighborhood will meet today at five-thirty PM via conference call. Please call Council, uh, Clark's office at two-zero-five-two-five-four-two-three-zero-four to get the dial-in information. The Thomas Neighborhood is also meeting today. They will gather in person at Mount Hebron Baptist Church, Thomas, or Mount Hebron Baptist Church, Thomas, at six-thirty PM. There are a lot of celebrations going on this week, so why not add one more? This is also National Wildflower Week. As pointed out by our friends at the Freshwater Land Trust, Alabama's native wildflowers are blooming across our protected lands, and they're not just beautiful. Uh, wildflowers support pollinators, improve soil health, and help sustain entire ecosystems. Get outside and take a walk, spot a bloom, and celebrate the color and life that native wildflowers bring to our world. Join the Birmingham Museum of Art in celebrating the vibrant traditions of African cultures and the museum's African art galleries with its annual African Heritage Festival. Sponsored by Medical Properties Trust with support from Blue Cross Blue Shield. Uh, the festival will feature art-making performances or feature art-making performances, face painting, and a focus on the BMAs. or feature art-making performances, face painting, and a focus on the BMAs African art collection. The fun kicks off at one PM this Saturday at the museum. The Five Points West Regional Library is hosting an after Mother's Day Spring Tea. Join your neighbors at High Noon on Monday, May twelfth, dressed to impress fresh refreshments and fun in celebration of mothers and mother figures. Please call the library to register. So that concludes District Eight. With District Four, we have the Fairmont Neighborhood Association that's taking place tonight at six PM at Mount Caramel Christ Church. That's fifty-one ten Cheek Road. We also have the Engle Nook Neighborhood Association that will take place on Monday at five-thirty PM at the Engle Nook Rec Center. We have the Airport Highlands Neighborhood Association that will take place on Monday at the Pleasant View Baptist Church. We also have the Woodlawn Neighborhood Association that will take place on Monday at six PM at Willowood Rec Center. And Roebuck Neighborhood Association that will take place at the East Precinct at six-thirty PM on Monday. So make sure y'all check out those neighborhood associations. Also wanted to make people aware of the Fourth Annual Melanin Mala Project. This is an opportunity for individuals in the community to learn about yoga, to also have free food, music, vendors, raffle prizes, bounce houses, and so many other things. This is sponsored by Miss, or hosted by Miss Adi Kour with the Engle Nook Yoga Studio. And this will take place May eighteenth at the East Lake Park, at East Lake Park from twelve noon to four PM. So if you want to learn more about yoga, practice mindfulness, please make sure that you come and check it out. We also have the Network Navigator Day that's taking place. And on May the seventh, at twelve PM at the Birmingham Crossplex, that's tomorrow, there will be a lunch and fireside chat with Mr. Eric Guster and Alicia Levels Moore. So we want to make sure that we, if you want to learn more about that, please go visit www.navigateBHm or BHm.com to learn more about the Network Navigator Day. And last but not least, wanted to, you know, extend my condolences to Officer Marlon Moore's family who was also a part of East Precinct. Just wanted to acknowledge him and offer up a resolution of sympathy for our BPD officer.
Move for unanimous consent.
Thank you.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And now the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmore. Council Smithlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Oakwood Place will meet on today at four PM at Harrison Park Recreation Center. Mason City will meet today as well at four-thirty PM via teleconference. North Tidusville will meet tomorrow at five PM at Memorial Park Recreation Center. And then on Monday, May twelfth at five PM, West End Manor will meet at New Hope Baptist Church. The next Budget and Finance Meeting will be on Monday, May twelfth at three-thirty PM in the council chamber. Some missions are due tomorrow by noon on May seventeenth, so it's not this Saturday, but the next from ten to two. I am partnering with Harmony and Heritage for their festival that will be held at the Arlington House. This is the second year. This is in partnership, like I said, myself, Sam Piper Advisory Group, and the Arlington Historic House. They'll have food tastings, Pilates, strength classes, massages, and other giveaways. And then also, there will be an expander clinic at New Hope Baptist Church on Thursday from nine to four PM. And then I'll be having my annual Mother's Day brunch this Saturday, which is actually sold out. I'm actually really happy about that, so I look forward to having that again this year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Awesome. Thank you, Councilor Smithlin. Pro Tim Alexander.
Thank you very much. These are the announcements for District Seven. On Thursday, May eighth, the Roosevelt City Neighborhood Association will meet at six PM at the Roosevelt Rec Center. On Monday, May twelfth, we have these upcoming neighborhood meetings. West Goldwire Neighborhood Association will meet at five PM via conference call. Poudley Neighborhood Association will meet at five-thirty PM at Henry Crumpton Rec Center. And the Oxmoor Valley Neighborhood Association will meet at six PM at the Oxmoor Rec Center. On Friday, June thirteenth, and we're giving you this information a little early so that you can go ahead and get registered, the Files Arts Project two thousand and twenty-five, they will have their twelfth annual dance and music workshop and showcase. So for workshop details and to register, visit www.thefilesartsproject.com. Registration is thirty dollars and spots are limited, so go ahead and be sure to sign up for those. Want to wish all mothers, as the mayor has already done, those present and those within District Seven and in our city, Happy Mother's Day, and that's it. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Council William.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development Tourism will have our work session in Conference Room D and E immediately following this meeting, which was supposed to start about forty minutes ago, but we're on the way. Roebuck Springs Neighborhood Association Meeting will be seven o'clock at New Beginnings Church. Roebuck Neighborhood Association Meeting will be the eighth at the East Precinct at six-thirty. Had a great time at Children's of Alabama Indy Grand Prix. We had forty-four individual states and nine countries represented in terms of visitors. And we were able to have every single academy from all of the Birmingham city schools out there, which was really cool. They were able to see what different careers look like. Some of the careers kind of meshed in with academies like engineering and stuff like that. Some of them did not mesh, but the kids were still interested in them. And then some of the kids said, no, I'm sticking with my career because I talked to one girl. She said I'm going to be an architect, so. But it was good to see because they not, what's so cool about Barber is that they have, you know, they let you try out the different daily functions of what that job looks like. And then they have, if you're interested in it, they have a corresponding program, whether it's a two-year, four-year, or trade school kind of thing on how to get to that job. And they connect everybody in one place, which is different because I think sometimes the workforce development is, you know, segmented a little bit, but this is everything under one tent, not roof, which is pretty cool to see. And it's cool to see the kids interacting with the robots and all that kind of stuff. We are about to start talking about annual fishing rodeo, which will be on a hot Saturday, June the seventh, from seven AM to one PM. It's going to be the same day that you do not need to have a fishing license in case you are a strict rule follower. But, but last year, we had about two thousand people and we had several tons of catfish put into the lake before. We will be doing the same thing. And so looking forward to all of us, all of us being out there in the heat. And that is all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, Council Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Willeam Neighborhood Association Meeting is tonight at six PM and it's going to be held at the Willeam Library located at forty-three hundred Seventh Avenue in Willeam. The Cypico Family Neighborhood Association, Association Meeting will be held on Wednesday, May the seventh at five-thirty PM. And they meet at the Cypico Plant Community Room that's located at fifteen hundred Thirty-second Avenue North. Inner Ridge Neighborhood Association will meet on Thursday, May the eighth at four PM. And they're going to meet via conference call. The number to call in is nine five two two oh six four nine one eight. The access code is two two three four one eight. Hooper City Neighborhood also will meet on Thursday, May the eighth at six PM. And it'll be held at the Hooper City Rec Center located at thirty-nine oh one Fourth Street West. North Birmingham Neighborhood Association will meet on Monday, May the twelfth at six PM, and their meeting is held at the North Birmingham Library located at twenty-five oh one Thirty-first Avenue North. The next Public Safety Meeting will be held on Tuesday, May the thirteenth, one PM in the council chamber. Please submit agenda items via email by May the seventh, no later than twelve noon, to Gregory-Stanley@BirminghamAL.gov and Ashanta.CFIS@BirminghamAL.gov. If you have questions, feel free to call our office at two five four two three oh two or two zero nine six six. And I just want to echo what my colleague said. Happy Mother's Day to all the moms and grandmothers, the aunties, the dads, everybody who was raising kids. And I want to thank everybody who came out to the Mother's Day brunch we did on Saturday at Delive Loft and Inslee. We had a time. The food was good. And thank all the, you know, the event planners, Ms. Barbara Square, you know, for, for the goodies. But again, Happy Mother's Day to all.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Councilor Tate, for the cost drops. Those are really helping. For District Five, I want to say Happy Small Business Week. And again, congratulations to Archibald and Woodrose on opening their new location yesterday to kick off Small Business Week in District Five. Please go visit them. They, they're doing great. They actually did a soft opening last Friday and, and they had over five hundred customers over the weekend. So they're off to a great start and the food's good. But that's, this is only the kickoff, and so there's lots of Small Business Week activities happening this week. If you'll go to the city's Department of Innovation and Economic Opportunity website or any of their social media outlets, you can find a listing of those activities. Also, want to say Happy Public Service Recognition Week. This, of course, is Teacher, also Teacher Appreciation Week. You know, that's a public service, if there ever was one. But, you know, want to thank all of the folks here in City Hall and especially in the council office that help us every day to serve our constituents. Special congratulations to Jeff McDaniel, who's our council deputy administrator. He was honored over the weekend or yesterday, I think it was yesterday, by the UAB Alabama Public Service Training Initiative as a two thousand and twenty-five unsung hero. You're certainly our hero, Jeff.
I'd like to second that. We are all very proud of our hero, Jeff.
He takes our calls no matter what time of day. All right, moving on, we have Neighborhood Association meetings in District Five. East Lake Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six PM at the Household of Faith Church. Forest Park, South Avondale meets also tonight at six-thirty at the Avondale Library. Smithfield will meet on Thursday at six PM at Smithfield Court. Gate City Neighborhood Association will be next Monday, May twelfth at four PM at the Marx Village Campus of Hope. And Oakridge Park will be also next Monday, May twelfth at six PM at the Harris Homes Recreation Center. Just want to remind folks that we need lifeguards. Birmingham Park and Recreation is continuing to hire lifeguards for our pools. Even if you're not certified, they will help you get certified. If you're interested, please contact Terry Sewell at two oh five two five four two one eight nine. Just want to remind folks also to please continue to support our stallions. They won their game this past Sunday. And, and they got off, you know, to a lead, which is a change. You know, usually they're coming back by a big deficit at the end. But they actually got it done early this time. But in addition to that, we also have the Alabama State Games and the World Police and Fire Games happening this summer. Please go to their respective websites and check them out. All of their events are free to attend. And I'm really excited especially about the World Police and Fire Games. Lots of, you know, really interesting events, sports that you probably, you know, haven't seen before, so check that out. And that concludes the announcements for District Five. Madam Clerk, we have several people that signed up for our public speakers list.
Yes, sir, we have. The first name is Jerome Jones.
Mr. Jones, as you approach, approach the mic, please remember to state your name and address. You'll have three minutes to speak and the time will be displayed on the monitors behind us.
My name, yeah, to the Honorable Mayor Woodson and to the City Council. Thanks for giving me this time to speak. I am a concerned citizen. Address is thirteen zero one Monroe Avenue Southwest. Have had a slew of problems here. People were not, the, 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 the management would not fix anything. Dealing with rodents. We're dealing with bed bugs. Trash all over the place. Last year, snakes, dogs running loose, wild dogs. I have called and people are not listening. Everything followed to death here. Our water was terminated because management was not paying their bill. And there's a threat that it might be cut off a year. I called HUD. They were non-responsive. I called City Council. They were non-responsive, non-responsive. I had to get on the telephone. I had to call up to the, up to the nation capital. And I talked with Terry Sewell's representative. She called Sheila Tyson. Sheila Tyson met me over at about the residency that I just given you. And this was last year. And the media came over and covered things. But since that has happened, everything has intensified. The living conditions are insufferable conditions. All I'm asking is that someone take a facet answers and hear my complaints. And I'm not just speaking for me. I am speaking for everybody that resides in, in, in the Four Winds West Apartments. Now, we got two elevators, one on the east, one on the west. Both of them are inoperable. We have senior citizens there. We got people in wheelchairs. We got people on walkers. Suppose a fire would break out and those people cannot move fast enough, which see, they could be overtaken by smoke ventilation. And I'm saying, who cares? I went to several court. That was a joke. Oh, before we could do anything, you got to have two hundred and forty-seven dollars, but I don't want to hear you. I lived in the state of Michigan for about close to thirty years. And I could pick up that phone if I had a problem. I could call any member of the city council. And they would, and they would have taken our vested answers. It wouldn't have mattered about what district they represented. They were concerned about the people. And I'm standing here, uh, uh, standing here begging to plead that somebody come to, come to the back and speak on behalf of the people at Four Winds West Apartments. Yesterday, a woman was trying to get up the steps. She couldn't make it, so. And so when you finally got her up the stairways, she wanted her apartment. She collapsed. We had to dial nine-one-one. They get their woman to the hospital.
Mr. Jones, I want to give Councilor Smithlin an opportunity to respond.
So I'm personally not aware of you contacting my office. That doesn't mean you didn't. We're aware.
I didn't understand.
You didn't hear me? I said, I'm not personally aware of you contacting my office, but that doesn't mean you have to talk to my staff. We understand Four Winds has been a problem for years. We've gone over there. We've called management. We know management is hard to get in touch with, but to my knowledge, I may be wrong, it's a private property that doesn't really fall under our jurisdiction. But I will be happy to talk to you after council meeting to see what other avenues we can explore to help you with Four Winds.
Okay, well, I, okay, I appreciate that. But I did talk to representatives in Terry Sewell's office. But I did talk to representatives in Terry Sewell's office. She reassured me that she would be keeping in contact with me. All the thing these people want is their rent money, but this money, they're not gonna get it. Oh, I have a money, a city debt, but I want something to improve before I talk loose my rent money again. You know, like I said, I went down to civil court. I didn't get, and I didn't see no concern from no people in that civil court. It's about you pay your rent, you obligated to pay your rent. Yes, I am obligated to pay my rent. But when they bring down like my refrigerators, I haven't had a stove to cook on now for the last six months. I'm cooking on a truck pot, an electric skillet. Why? Because they would not bring me a stove that is operable. And I think that's just outright, downright disgraceful and disrespectful, and I'm caring.
Mr. Jones, so, you know, this is...
But it's okay. It's okay.
I'm sorry.
You can speak. Yeah, I'll do it afterwards.
Okay, I would just, so this is not an uncommon issue in the city of Birmingham and actually all over Alabama, because there's a state law called the Alabama Landlord-Tenant Act that prohibits municipalities and counties from interfering in that landlord-tenant relationship. So, you know, there are other avenues that we could potentially do. We could revoke their business license, we could send a building inspector there. But both of those courses of action would likely result in the condemnation or closure of the building and the displacement of the residents, and I don't think that's what you want to see happen. I would recommend that, you know, there are a couple of resources available. There's the Fair Housing of Northern Alabama that represents folks, you know, that are being discriminated or in this situation. And then there's the volunteer lawyers of Birmingham that...
Sir, I've been there, and they are not gonna do anything. I'm not being disrespectful, but I have been there. You know, I went down to Lega, went down to Lega A.
Yes, Lega A, right here.
They didn't do anything. I've tried to contact HUD because HUD pays a portion of our rent. I thought HUD would get involved. I would call down to Montgomery, no, to Atlanta. I want to know why? Why? Don't you have a HUD represented in the city of Birmingham?
Well, there is a housing authority of the Birmingham District, but many of the people who receive housing vouchers receive those through other entities, not through HABD.
Well, sir, I appreciate what you say and relate. But in closing, we're up against a fight of our lives, of our survival at this city. You know, I want to thank you for everything, but it's not gonna stop here. Because when I paid my rent, I've never been delinquent. I've been in that building for about 21 years now. I've never once been delinquent on rent. But I cannot get no type of representation. You see, because every time I go here, it's this, you got to do that. And these laws need to be changed.
Yes, sir, we 100% agree.
These laws in Alabama must be changed. You know, and I'm not taking these issues lightly, because everywhere you go, that's a stopping point. These problems have to be dealt with systematically. These are the problems that we are dealing with. And anytime I can go to civil court and I got people looking at me like I am nonexistent, and gonna say to me and tell me, well, you are obligated to pay your rent, and that's that. And if you want to file a civil complaint, that can cost $247. Well, it ain't gonna cost me no $247. What am I gonna get when I go to civil court? Absolutely nothing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. All right, next speaker.
The next speaker is Cynthia Turner.
Ms. Turner, as you approach the mic, please remember to state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, everyone. I came here originally for two reasons, but I have another one now since I've been here. My first issue is, I guess, will be with the mayor's office. I guess they're the ones who I need to speak to. Let me start, I am a neighborhood officer. I always advocate for others, but today I'm here advocating for myself. This is in reference to the last time I came, which is claim case number 2100008536, which was a request number 12208361, and the latest claim number, which is 18519977, which the number I gave you was from 2022 for creek and ditch maintenance. Let's start with having to come up here about the same issue over and over without results of the real issue. Partial work has been done. I've been advised, once a bulldozer is available, the rest of the work will be done. But that has been over a year ago. I don't know how many bulldozers this city has, but it shouldn't take that long. And that's my first issue. The second issue is, I wrote this actually before this happened, but it applies today, too. Most people don't have time to come up here to sit and to speak when there's a problem. But today, I have time, so I'm here. The last two times I've come, there's been executive session, which takes a while. The city of Birmingham meets in the daytime, which doesn't allow most people to attend. We don't meet in the evening as most cities do. Got to get paid to be here, but the speakers, we sit, we wait till everything's done and to the very end. Is it possible that the speakers can be moved to the beginning of the agenda permanently? Is that to wait the whole time?
No, ma'am, because the Mayor-Council Act sets out the agenda order of business, and so we follow that order of business as it's, you know, we're mandated by the Mayor-Council Act.
So the mayor's the only one that can change it, is that correct?
No, the Alabama State Legislature creates the Mayor-Council Act.
Okay. The third one is when I was outside, I left earlier. I was outside today, I had two or three seniors out there at the parking that, no, that's not anymore parking meters. And all the ladies out there, they did not know how to work the app. They didn't want to have issues with parking, and I don't know how is it, I don't really know how to fix it, but maybe that's something y'all can do. A way y'all can advocate or show the seniors how to work the app, how to pay, because no one knows. Every time I come, it's always people out there that do not know how to work the app to pay to park. And I guess I don't know if it's because it's just this district does not have one, but the other streets do. But the ones that park on the street, everybody's coming to me, because I'm doing it. I don't know how to fix it, but I just noticed there's an issue every time I come, so I just wanted to let y'all know.
There's a telephone number also on the parking meters that folks can call. So you don't have to have an app in order to park on the street. Okay.
I wanted to see if anyone had a question about the first one that I stated. And what was the follow-up? Because no one has said anything or put up with me.
I couldn't really understand what you were stating. I think we have Miss Alicia Lumpkin outside. I think she was trying to get the case number information from you, so we can follow up on it. So you can step right out there and give her that information. We can follow up on what you were asking about.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Janie Spencer.
Good morning.
Ready?
Yes.
Good afternoon, I'm Janie Spencer, 4142 Crescent Road in Birmingham, 35222. I want to thank the council for approving item 27 on today's agenda, the recommendation from the mayor's office that the abandoned house at 4130 Crescent Road be demolished. I have lived next door to that house for several decades. During that time, the property was always occupied by members of the same family, but the last resident abandoned the house about four years ago. The property, which had always been poorly maintained before its abandonment, rapidly began to show signs of increasing distress. As Valerie Abbott can attest, I have contacted her office several times over the last 10 years or so regarding my concern over the deteriorating state of the house and yard. In recent years, however, the situation has become truly alarming. The house is literally falling in on itself. Support beams have collapsed, several windows have no glass panes whatsoever and offer unfettered access to the inside of the house. For several decades, two rusting cars have been parked in the backyard and are overgrown with weeds, vines, and shrubbery. Perhaps every five or six months, someone will show up and cut back the overgrowth in the front yard, but no other visible attempts to maintain or restore the property are ever made. More than once, large limbs from dead trees in the yard have fallen into my property. The house and the yard offer a haven for wildlife, and I have seen raccoons and possums on my front porch as recently as last week, in addition to having mice inside my house. The health hazard posed by these animals is obvious. The most terrifying hazard that the house represents, however, is fire. Only a few weeks ago, Alabama Power had to send a crew out because sparks had been spotted around one of the wires behind the house. Following that scare, trucks came out to cut back the tree limbs and vines hanging over the wires. If this abandoned house catches fire, I am quite confident that my house will not be far behind it. The dead trees, undergrowth, and the structure of the house itself will offer more than enough fuel to threaten the entire neighborhood. My house, which is only a few feet away, would probably be the first to go. I am grateful to the mayor's office for finally taking decisive action to remove this blight on the neighborhood. I was encouraged by a recent report in the Birmingham News about the number of demolitions that the city has carried out, although I recognize there are still hundreds more to go. I urge the council to move forward as quickly as possible with the demolition of this property. Thank you for your attention to this matter and for your commitment to the city of Birmingham.
Thank you, Ms. Spencer, appreciate it. Councilor Abbott.
I would just like to say that I am sorry it took us so long. It's embarrassing, but, so we just have to be embarrassed, but I'm glad that it's finally happening. No one should have to live next to a mess like that.
Thank you, Valerie, and I appreciate your encouragement. The first time I contacted you 10 or more years ago, that the council was aware of the property, it's been an issue for decades. As I say, my grandparents bought my house in 1937. So my family has lived in that property for many decades, and the house has always been a problem. So thank you for finally moving forward on it.
Thank you.
All right, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Ricky Green.
I don't see Mr. Green present, so...
Mr. President, I did have two things that I wanted to say.
Counselor Moore.
Yeah, thank you. One, the Community Development Committee will take place today at 2:00 PM, and Park and Rec, Park and Recreation will take place tomorrow. They have a board meeting at 9:00, so, at Leachville.
All right. And finally, I want to thank Officers Pinkard and Campbell for being here with us this morning. Counselor Williams? All in favor, say aye.
All opposed.
So today, we were here at Englewood K-8 with High Five Birmingham, celebrating the kids for their academic achievement. Good morning, good morning. Got to stay prayed up, I hear you. Good morning, good morning. So Englewood was actually one of the schools on the state list that had the most improved in their reading scores, and so we wanted to make sure that we showed up today to celebrate them for their hard work and everything that they're doing. High five, high five. Good morning, good, good, good morning, good morning. We had Chief Moon with the Fire Department, we had Chief Pickett with the Police Department, we had cheerleaders from Lost Estate Community College. And so many other people that were here to celebrate our young people for their great work. Olive Elementary, Arrington Elementary, and Englewood Elementary. It's all about education. And again, if we can have pep rallies for basketball, we can have pep rallies for football, surely we can honor the academic achievements for our kids. I want to say thank you to the president here, President Steve Brown, for the hard work that he's done, as well as his staff. And look, it was a great morning and a great way to start today.
Well, it's a great day for cleanup in College Hills neighborhood. I think we have the most clean, cleanup-oriented neighborhood president that we could possibly have.
I do it pretty much every day, and sometimes my hair looks like it, for sure. But because I love the area, because I respect the heritage of the area and of Birmingham, I try to contribute every day, volunteer to try to pick up and clean up.
She's a great role model for cleanliness, and we're happy to be out giving her some support today and multiplying her everyday efforts. And it's just so gorgeous, you know, spring is here, and it's just a good day to be neighborly.
We're out here because we know that Birmingham can do better, but it takes each and every one of us to give and contribute just a little. Imagine if everybody, no matter what their status, no matter what their financial means, if they just contributed just a little every day, some way, just a moment a day to someone else, where Birmingham would be. Not only Birmingham, but if we did that in the country, where we could be.
When you take on a cleanup, even if it's just your block, it's a chance to get to know your neighbors a little deeper as you spend time and you coordinate how you're gonna do the block, who's gonna start on what end, and whatnot. It's just a good way to get together and know your neighbors. The season is just getting kicked off, so we expect a lot more of these in District Eight.
President and city council representative for District Five. Today, we are in Lewis Park in Gate City. Ms. Wilma Davis, who was the former neighborhood officer, neighborhood president for the Gate City neighborhood, came to myself and Representative Neil Rafferty several years ago, asking us to help revitalize this playground.
And she said, what y'all gonna do about this playground?
There was a bunch of dirt that had washed away, and just things were in a state of disrepair.
We gonna let Ms. Davis have the honor of cutting the ribbon?
So Neil and I committed to working on this project. It took us a few years to get it done, but thanks to, especially, the American Rescue Plan, we were able to direct dollars to this project and get it done. We, you know, are spread thin across a lot of neighborhoods, and we depend on our neighborhood officers to come to us and, you know, really tell us what the needs of the community are. So, Ms. Wilma Davis, we honor you, and, you know, mission accomplished.
Larry Thorn, before.
Hey, everybody, Councilor Clinton was. We are here today at a very special place. You might have heard of it, McDonald's. We're here to talk to Mr. Larry Thorn. We're here to talk to, uh, Mr. Larry Thornton, incredible entrepreneur in our, in our community, has had a lot of success. And we just want to hear a story. We think it's important to continue to, uh, take a deep dive into our workforce development, our ecosystem here from our small businesses that have experienced success and, and really elevate the stories of some of the entrepreneurs right here in Birmingham. Let's go in and learn a little bit more about Mr. Larry Thornton.
I appreciate this opportunity. I appreciate you and what you are doing to highlight black business. This is huge for a demographic that is sixty-five to seventy percent African-American. They need to see us. I wake up every morning, I'm not even thinking about Coca- don't tell the chairman that I said this, but I'm not thinking about Coca-Cola, I'm not thinking about McDonald's, I'm not thinking about the bank. And I know that God has led me through all of this to get to where we are today. Can't wait to get to this part. I knew as early as second grade that I had some modicum of artistic inclination. I was one of the first six black students to attend Goodwin Junior High School. I bought everything that they were selling, that I was less than, I had nothing to offer, I had nothing to contribute. Let's pass forward to my senior English teacher, Ms. Nichols. This lady changed the trajectory of my life. She's the first person that ever used my name in college in the same sentence. What would I study in college, Ms. Nichols? Well, you've helped me with my bulletin board all year, you can study art. So obviously, when I graduated, a teacher is all that I ever want to be. They had shaped my life. I would have been comfortable teaching school the rest of my life. I loved it. But after four years, Bob James administration, prorated education, and I, along with seven other teachers, we lost our job. I realized that they didn't take my job, they took their job. I've got to go and get my job. And that's where the entrepreneurial bug bit me. So I'm out freelancing, painting signs, and I come across the coat sign. I get in, five dollars an hour. Within four months, I'm promoted to advertising manager. I started in nineteen seventy-nine. Today, I'm still with Coca-Cola. Well, I've been there maybe fifteen years, and then the opportunity to transfer now to work for Ronald McDonald, another world-class, first-in-category brand. Uh, what an awesome opportunity. I mean, I just feel like the luckiest guy in Birmingham. On the first day that I opened, here comes this owner and his two partners into Heritage McDonald's Restaurant. He said, you know you can't run a McDonald's, don't you? Yep, we're gonna own this in six months. It's like O M G, that David Goliath theme. But if I had the presence of mind, I would have given him a thank you note because he encouraged me day and night. You won't own this one in six months. Oh, no. Not only did he not own my restaurant in six months, before the decade was out, we owned five of his.
Working with my father was, uh, and still is, part of one of the best things in my life. So everything that I do, all the good things come from him.
He grew up in the business. Ten years old when we opened the first restaurant, so he stayed close. At twenty-five years old, he became the youngest franchisee in the McDonald's system. He is just awesome. He's passionate. He makes it possible for me to get to the black belt, to do what we do with this work.
I feel as if you're blessed or you're able to do certain things, you should be able to give that back because God gave you that for a reason, not for you to keep yourself, but to spread and make the community better.
And that's what has happened, these wonderful vehicles that I have enjoyed, that today allow me to make the same difference that Ms. Nichols made in my life. And I often think of how completely I could have put it together, of what I could do if a black artist came into my classroom, opened up her story. Wow. And that's what we're doing with these young people. I really wasn't writing a book. I was simply chronicling for the benefit of my family. Every single school, we see artists, we see poets, and we see those who would like to be business owners. That's what this example represents.
And I think if we're able to be on young people's life, whether it's going to school, whether it's school home, whether it's at the school, whatever the case may be, if we can be that example.
We have committed to the entire Alabama Black Belt. Well, we're taking this program, and we've done four counties now. We have nine more. It's gonna take us two school years.
I have to focus on the children that are gonna be in the world with my children, and my grandchildren, and, you know, those years beyond. And that's how we give back, uh, just like this program that you're doing now and all the things that I know that you do and stuff that you probably don't let other people know that you do to help make this community, county, and the world a better place.
Don't let it be said that I never actualized, I never materialized because I didn't put the work in. One of the most horrifying nightmares that any human being could ever have is to one day be introduced to the person that you never became.